Today's Monday, June 30th, 2025. It's 5 o'clock. Thank you all for joining us. We begin tonight with a presentation on the Gateway Bridge project that we've been chatting about over the last several weeks. And for that, we welcome Brett Morlock, our city engineer. Brett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. So similar to the discussions we've had, now that we've got the full group here, I'm going to go over a couple items. We're going to go over what the budget stands like currently. We'll go over those numbers. We're going to go over what expenses we have incurred so far. And then ultimately, we're going to talk about the current bid that we do have, which does put us a little over budget. And then some thoughts on why we think those numbers came in where they are. Some potential solutions if you do choose to move forward and want to award. And then ultimately, we do have kind of three options that we've put together at staff level that we'd like you guys to consider. So current budget as it stands is a total project budget would be $13.5 million. There are two CIP projects that make up that total amount. There is one in the arterial collector section that's shown for a total budget amount of $11,735,000. That is projected to be paid back with TIF bonds. As we'll talk, as we have talked about, those were actually issued as GEO, but it is shown in the CIP as TIF. With those proceeds intended to go back to pay for that. Then there is also a section under the rec trails, sidewalk and rec trail section that has a total dollar amount of $1,765,000. So like I said, two project numbers, they are in separate sections, unfortunately, in CIP with the way we have it formatted, which can lead to some confusion, I think unfortunately has. So we'll, we'll try to keep that. Generally speaking, we only have one funding source for 95% of our projects. So generally, they're readily identifiable. This one does have a couple. So I think that's led to some confusion. Current expenses so far that we have incurred, a little over $1.8 million for engineering for the bridge. Phase one construction was about $418,000. That was the advanced trail work that we needed to get done last year. That runs parallel with the east drive of TBK Bank Sports Complex outside the fence for the soccer fields. Gives the public connection back through the facility, back down to Competition Drive. And then we have a current bid of $11,595,000 for the phase two project, which is the bridge and the remaining trails work. We did have six bids. We had two from the area, excuse me, three from the area. So the low bidder was Kramer and Associates out of Grimes. We actually have two Kramers, so we're going to call them Kramer with a C. They are one of the largest, if not the largest, bridge builder in Iowa. They've done work on the 8380 bridges or reconstruction interchange there. They actually built several of the arches across 235 that our project is very similar to. They're doing work in Davenport now, doing work for all counties, current DOT work, more than capable of doing the project. Second low bid was GCI, so our local Bettendorf company here, they were a couple hundred thousand higher. We had Brant Construction was also a local bidder. Actually, I guess it was Ford, excuse me. Civil Helm, who is, has a presence in the Quad Cities out of Freeport, was also a bidder. And then we had two Des Moines, we had United Contractors out of Des Moines, and then Kramer Construction out of Wisconsin. They were a contractor actually on the I-74 project. So the bids ranged from the low 11.595 to, I believe, the high was in the almost $15 million. So we had a pretty good range. The bottom two, like I said, were, were very close, less than 1% apart. So if you add in those three expenses that we've talked about, and we still have a line item that we're estimating at about a half million dollars for construction inspection. So as we've talked, that's a third party inspection. We will do all the inspection that we can at our staff level. But we're not structural engineers. So there's pieces of that bridge that we just can't watch. There's special rebar inspections for the arch piers. There's the steel inspections themselves, making sure those connections are done properly. There's wind testing because of the arch and the suspended deck. So we estimate that about half million dollars. That contract would still need to be brought forward, but that would put the total at $14.33 million. So that's $830,000 over what is currently allotted for the total project. That's a difference of just about 6% from that $13.5 million budget. If we did move forward, we would ask that with the savings that we're going to talk about here in a minute, that we would actually allocate a total of a million dollars more to the project that would provide a little over 1%, about 1, 1 and 1/2% contingency. Something's going to come up on a project of this size. So we want to make sure that we can address something on that smaller end. So I do want to also add that while the number came in over our budget, which was established several months ago, if not a year ago at this point, it's actually below the engineer's estimate. Now, that is always a snapshot just before bid, so it's the most accurate. But you can't put that estimate together until you finish design. So you finish design, you get quantities, put that estimate together. So it was actually, the pricing overall was still really good despite coming in over and despite the two items that we're going to talk about here next. The engineer's estimate finished at 11.8 million, so we're about $200,000 under that. The two main items when we compared all 75 line items in the, in the project that stuck out the most were, and they were the biggest ones naturally. It was the structural steel and the precast concrete deck sections. So the steel was $950,000 over the estimate. And as I mentioned, steel prices obviously are still very volatile with tariffs and, you know, overall price uncertainty. The steel pricing, so the DOT maintains a 12-month rolling average for all of their bid items. The structural steel, the last 12 months, the average across the state has been $2.50 a pound. Now, this is specialized steel because of the arch, so we knew that average wouldn't hold. But we estimated it at double that conservatively, and it came in at three times that. So the, the number came in at 750 a pound. It was as high as, I think, $10 or $11 a pound in, in some of the bids. We also only had one vendor that was willing to quote at least to the, several of the, the lowest contractors that we did talk to. We spoke to both GCI and Kramer. And then the concrete deck section, same situation, only had one vendor, and that was about a half million dollars over. So that accounts for $1.45 million delta there in our, in our budget. I think when we looked at possibly contributing factors as to, one, the pricing, two, the fact we only had one vendor for each of those, a couple of things stuck out. One is there's a massive amount of bridge work going on across country. The fact that we got six general contractors was great. They're still limited by their suppliers. And then our, while it's a 10 or 11 million dollar project, that's still a big project for us. In the grand scheme of things, an arch bridge at that scale is not a big project. Most of these guys are probably used to interchange level projects where you're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. So I think we kind of fell in that tough spot where it might've been tough for them to commit to pricing or just commit to even giving any pricing, not, not even the dollar amount, given that project size. One thing that we have talked quite a bit about is the price controls, the, the cost controls that we, we do pride ourselves in on our projects. This is the only project we've had all year that's coming over budget. I think it's only one the last two years that has. And unfortunately, these larger projects are more difficult to estimate. There's a lot of price uncertainty, especially when you get specialized items. You know, a perfect example, I think, would be the I-80 and Mill Road interchange. So when that project was first estimated in the CIP, when the mayor and Jeff and I went out to the commission and advocated for that project, it was $50 million. They put it in the CIP at 50 million, their five-year program, as they call it, with 25 million funded, 25 million unfunded. That project currently, two and a half years later, three years later, sits at almost $70 million. So they, they, they really are difficult, especially with no design. So that's, I, I think, a little bit of the contributing factor there as well. So as we've looked at that and as I've worked with Jason and Jeff to try to figure out a way that we could not absorb any new money and try to still make the project happen, we looked at a couple of things. We looked at, we are about $650,000 under budget right now in projects that have been bid this year. All of them are going well with no indication that we'll have any additional expenses on any of those. Last year, we finished the year about $850,000 under. I also went back and looked at the delta of the bid versus the final actual construction cost. We saved another $200,000 or so across all of our projects last year versus the initial bid cost versus the final. So we build in contingency items in the projects, not a lot of them, but there's always things. And generally speaking, we did not need to use any of those. So that 650 by the end of the year could be 750 or $800,000 when we get to final, final contract costs. We also looked at one other project that is scheduled for construction year 2026. That is Kimberly Road resurfacing, basically out in front of Duck Creek Golf Course. That project needs to be pushed back a year, period. As we've talked, there's, we only own half of that road, so we need to coordinate with Davenport to really make that project an effective project. And they haven't had a chance to put that into their five-year program yet. So knowing that we're getting, before we know it, this construction will be, season will be over, already looking at next year, we were going to look to push that back one year, and that carries a price tag of about $400,000 right now. So that would be money that was planned to be spent, would still have to be borrowed for, but that would not be obligated next year, which puts you right at $1,050,000. So that would get us enough if you did proceed to, or just did decide to proceed with the project. I think Decker wanted to maybe talk for a minute about the possible options that we considered.
Your Honor?
Please.
So, and then I want you to go back over schedule when we talk about it. So we really see three thoughts for you to consider and have your discussion on tonight. One is, as Brent outlined, that to do the project and utilize the dollars that he's talked about. The second thought process is that, and we need to make a decision one way or the other by no later than the first meeting in August, because under the purchasing guidelines, we need to either accept the bid or reject the bid and move on so that the contractor knows they either have this project or they don't. So that has to be considered no later than the first meeting in, in August. And then secondly, we would suspect if you chose not to pursue it, if you didn't take the first recommendation that we made, that you would reject the bids and attempt to go out at a later point in time to see if there's any opportunity for any savings. The problem with that alternative, and Brent will talk about it, is the schedule is pretty well defined and how it interferes with the I-80 project in terms of the detours. It probably doesn't align well and would likely push us back past the interstate project, which means you'd be rejecting for probably a two-year to three-year period of time. And we don't know that there would be any difference in pricing at that point. And then the third option would be to reject it altogether and abandon the project. Certainly, you would have the engineering, just like we did for the elevator, if we wanted to come back to that at some point in time. But you would then move on with those dollars and fund a different project. And our thought is that it would likely have to move to Middle Road because we've got our thought process of doing that project. So we really see those three as the, and then of course, if you reject it, we have a development agreement with the developer. And we would have to sit and try to negotiate what that agreement means and what that potential expenditure is. And so those are kind of the three that we want you to focus on, unless you come up with something we're not aware of. And I don't know if Brent wants to talk just about schedule or any other item before we turn it to you, Your Honor.
Yeah, so of the three options, schedule is a very critical component. So the, if you decided to move forward with the recommendation to award the project, use the additional funds as allocated. The contractor has indicated that his schedule would be to do super, or I'm sorry, substructure work this fall and winter. So that's your foundations, your piers, your pier caps. Any of that work that he could get done, mostly because that's the work he can do while his steel is being fabricated, knowing that that's going to have a pretty significant lead time. Then he would come back, well, he would stay on the project. But the steel erection, so the arches themselves and setting all the, the deck steel would happen mid to late spring, worst case, early summer of 2026. And then they'd finish kind of the associated trails work and all landscaping and restoration that has to be done would get done by the end of calendar year 2026, probably no problem in talking with them, October, November of 2026. So that gets us clear of any of the detours, as Decker was talking about. The, the key really is to set the steel, to set the arch over Middle Road. That's going to require some road closures. They're weekday only, as we've already planned them. That way, there's no impact to tournaments or anything like that. But there is no way to do that and keep traffic going. You can't work over traffic. Getting those done before midsummer is critical because there's one stage in the DOT's project that has about a 90-day closure of Middle Road north of the interstate. So they have to rebuild that triple box culvert there that Spencer Creek goes under. And they have to be rebuilt completely because of the re-channeling of the, of the creek. So that's, that's a hard closure. Like I said, three months of work, two and a half to three months. And we cannot conflict with that because otherwise we have nowhere to take traffic. So you'd be completely shut down, basically the interchange would. So we have to be done with all of our work on Middle Road before that date or we're pushed out to the end of 2027, looking at a project in 2028. So that would really affect those first two options to either proceed and make sure we do it in a timely manner so we can get the steel ordered and stay on schedule. Or to come back, you're looking at 2028, which drags into 2029 construction. And if you figure two and a half to 3% inflation each year, that's going to be more than the, well, more than the million that we are currently short. And that's assuming that contractor, even contractors have the availability to do it at that point as well. And then that third option, the only thing I'd like to add to that is we did look at, if we did decide to reject the bids, and then you would need to go back and renegotiate the development agreement, the cost of just a basic bridge, basically a concrete beam bridge, a county bridge, if you want to call that, with chain link fence over it, basically the George Tean and Overpass, is probably going to run you about $6 to $7 million because you have to go back and re-engineer it, and you still have 950 to 1,000 foot of bridge to build. So you're, you could potentially be looking at, let's say that's $6 and a half, $7 million, you know, not knowing what the ultimate negotiation would settle in. But even if it was half that, you could be at $6 million between what we've already spent and that and not get a bridge at all. So that third option definitely needs to be, have that full thought process and what the potential dollars amount could be without getting anything through the project. So with that, I'm hoping for any further questions, discussion.
Greg J.
Just a couple of quick questions that I understand where we are factually. If we were to award the contract today, ignoring the contingencies, how much short are we?
So we, let's see. $830,000. Still assuming that that construction administration contract comes, yes.
I'm sorry, say it again because I want to be clear.
Yep, so the, we still have to provide construction administrations. We have not awarded that contract, but I've got that penciled in at a half million dollars.
At a half a million?
Yep.
But as of today, if we were going to do something, we're $830,000 short.
Including that half million. Otherwise, we're $330,000 short.
And your recommendation is that we set aside a contingency just in case because this may not be the end of it? And you're suggesting $200,000?
$170,000 to put it in a million, yep.
So basically, a million dollars is what you're asking us to consider. In the course of your presentation, you also indicated that the 11735 was being funded out of TIF revenues.
That's out of GEO.
It was a GEO debt, but the capital improvement plan is put into the, as a TIF reimbursement. From my information, the bonds that have been issued to pay for the 11735, are they totally being paid for out of TIF dollars? Or are they being paid for out of TIF dollars and other revenue sources?
It will require a combination of TIF dollars and the, the debt service levy, so that, you know, the general debt service fund.
Okay, so that if our CIP says it's being paid for out of TIF dollars, that's partially correct.
Yeah, there's only so many, so many descriptors I can put in those cells, but, yep.
It's okay. I just, I want us to understand where the problem is and how funding is as we start to talk about this. Has the staff considered any other options other than these, these three?
We have not.
Okay, thank, thank you, Your Honor.
Anybody else? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have, I have a question about the bids. Looking at the bids, there's a lot of money in there for fancy lighting, for aesthetic lighting. Have we considered taking that out of the project? Because if you took that out of the project, looking at the bid tabs, the contractors all bid the same. So obviously, they all went to the same sub. If you took that, those two line items out of there for the aesthetic lighting, I know that's the wow factor of the bridge, but at the same time, we got to consider money. If you took that out, you wouldn't be short money at all.
That's correct. Yes.
So have you, have you considered that?
We did consider it, and ultimately, that would still be something up to you. We'd have to negotiate that out because it is part of the bid. We did consider that. I think if you, at least through all the discussions that I've had with all of you, as we worked through the progressions of the aesthetics, the sticking point was two things in terms of the aesthetics. It was what it looked like during the day, but also what it looked like during the night. Part of the reason that the arch is, well, actually, the whole reason that the arch is white versus the blue that we talked about was that if it's blue, you can't light it. So you wouldn't see anything at night. Whereas if it's white, you could light it, do the color changing. So it, it would materially change the project, I would say, but that is an option. That is correct. It is something you could pull out.
Nick?
Just for frame of reference, the development agreement that's in place, was this for, was this negotiated during phase one of that? I don't know that I recall that. So I'm just trying to get a timeline of when we agreed to the bridge.
The bridge would have been phase two.
Phase two?
The MFG, FG80.
I understand that it was an ask from the developers, but do we have any data that suggests that this thing will be used? I know that there's a lot of people out there. I mean, that's one.
I would say it, it's really impossible unfortunately to provide data that it will be used. We ran into that as we were trying to apply for grants for this because it's a safety improvement and obviously a gateway feature, but a safety improvement for something that doesn't exist. So until you actually build it and put people on there, you can't say that the, the numbers are going to be there. I think anecdotally, you can see that people are using all of the paths out there quite frequently. I think the ability to connect that loop, provide a safe cross-access, and I, I think the developments, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I think would really probably help drive that as well. Right now, it's, you know, a dead-end sidewalk to nowhere on, on each of those ends.
And you do see kids kind of traversing, running in traffic to get back and forth.
Through the roundabouts, correct.
Really to get to the Quick Star. That's where they went when I avoided them. Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brett, we've redone this development agreement twice, I believe, '22 and '23. Was that at our request or the, the builders' request?
Can't answer that one.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Baden. The, the request was made, if you recall initially, the developers were going to construct more outdoor turf fields. And they came back and found that building the vertical structure that's there today was actually slightly more economical, but would also serve as year-round amenity. So they requested for us to amend the development agreement at that time so they could have a year-round amenity out there instead of something that's more seasonal like the outdoor ball fields would be. So each ti, each time we have amended the agreement, it has been per the request of the developer. The other, I'm sorry, the other time too as well, I'll just add this as well, is we amended and restated the urban renewal plan out there to bring in more land. At the time, it was, there was the consideration of some potential more commercial development. And a couple of property owners who refused to be a part of the original urban renewal plan at that time voluntarily chose to be included. So part of that second amendment also included a restatement of the urban renewal plan to bring in more land because the private property owners found it more marketable and to their benefit at the time to have their land included in the urban renewal track.
The, one of the reasons for my concern about this area is the fact that if we go with one of the options that we have available to us, which is just walk away, I think that would, our credibility as a city with developers would go to the bottom. And they may never do another DA with us, and that concerns me a little bit. So I just wanted to make sure that got out in the open. One more thing, I have a son that's in the construction business in the Atlanta area, and I kind of talked to him about this a little bit on the phone the other night. And I said, what could we expect? And I just want to make sure this is what you see on your end. What could we expect if we walked away from this and rebid it? And he said, higher prices. He says, the bidders will not go down, they'll go up. So.
Yeah, I think in, in the 10 years that I've been here, we've rejected one bid early on, early years. And it was a, I think, one of our initial, very first alley projects, came back and same thing, numbers went up. They, they always do. Everybody sees everybody's number now and knows that they're most likely not going to come down. I can add a little, then they can add a little, and you add one or 2% over $11 million, you're at another million dollars before you know it.
Well, that's a concern that I have. So plus, you're going to have your engineering to do all over.
If you went with a different reach, correct.
Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. A follow-up on a question to Jeff there. My understanding, when we amended the development agreement, that we also extended the time. The, the time limit for the developer to have certain part of the part, project done was extended by at least a year. And then my question is, when we added more property into it, did we change the minimum assessment? And are we getting the minimum assessment right now?
So the, I'll answer the second question first. When we added the land into the urban renewal area, that was simply an inclusion of land that's not part of the development agreement or the TIF district. It was two pieces of land that property owners voluntarily wanted to come into the urban renewal area, none of which is currently built on, and none of which has any TIF or tax increment or minimum assessment tied to it. It's not a party to any agreement we have today. They just voluntarily wanted to be part of the urban renewal area to make their land more marketable, drive up the cost a little bit, in my opinion. The second question, the first question relative to the timing, we found at the time that our pedestrian bridge was not going to be done in, in the timeline for which was originally stated in the development agreement. We were not so concerned about that at the time because the developer requested an extension to construct that indoor facility outside of the scope of what it was going to take to construct the outdoor fields. So basically, they knew that the outdoor fields were not going to meet their time requirement of the DA. And they then turned around and wanted to do indoor facilities, which were going to take a little bit more time. When we amended the DA, we found that we were not also going to have the, the means or the reality of constructing the pedestrian bridge in the timeline that we had put in the DA as well. So we mutually agreed to extend both of those deadlines. And it's a very good point you make, Councilmember Sexer, because that's one we haven't touched on as well. And Counselor, if you could correct me if I'm wrong on this, but as the development agreement reads today, we're supposed to be completed with the pedestrian bridge, I believe, in January of '26. We believe we have a little bit of leeway in there based on, you know, cost of materials, weather extrenuating circumstances. But the reality is, is there is an expectation that that bridge would be constructed in 2026. So however we shake this out amongst this discussion, there's likely going to be an amendment to the DA anyways to reflect the new construction timeline of a pedestrian bridge.
And on the minimum assessment? Were you going to comment on the minimum assessment?
So there's no minimum assessment agreement on the added land because they were brought into the urban renewal track.
But there is on the initial, on the initial DA, right?
Correct. There is a minimum assessment agreement on the initial DA, which they have already far exceeded. And we are still anticipating what the value for ORA will look like. But they have far exceeded the minimum assessment amount for that TIF district and that area for which the DA is residing within.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Greg A., then we'll go Lisa.
No, go ahead, Lisa.
No, you can.
You got my attention in your red shirt first, sir.
Senorita.
Senorita. I am older than you, don't forget. First of all, I, I'm just kind of. First of all, I'm just kind of embarrassed that I'm sitting here asking questions and scratching my head on a big project like this. I, I should have paid more attention. I just, I just think, first of all, I keep hearing that if we reject this, that all these contractors and stuff are going to blackball Bettendorf. I don't think that that's true at all. The reason that we're sitting here, all sitting here trying to figure this out is because it just got too doggone much, it just costs too much money. The last, I, I think even at eleven-seven, I was like, man, that's a lot, that's a lot of money. But I just think, I just think it's, it's too much money. The bridge is, the question came up, how many people are going to use it? Who knows? But I can tell you, just from common sense, it's not going to get used a lot in the big scheme of things because most people are not going to walk from all those shops and stores and stuff across that bridge to get over to an indoor rec facility or ORA or whatever. They're going to, or I R and T, they're going to drive their car over there. If, if this is something that the TBK folks really want, then perhaps we can talk to them about helping out with the cost. I don't know if that's possible or not. I hate, I, I, I know we've got, we found money, things have come in under budget. Well, good, it's under budget. We can do another project that we've already got planned. Or we can do whatever. I just, I just think it's too much money. I would like to see us in a timely manner go back and try to get something done to help with the cost. If, if that turns out to be not as fancy a bridge, that's just, I think, the way it has to be. But anyway, I just, I really can't support it. I think it's too much money. It just gotten, it's gotten to be too much money. Thank you, Your Honor.
Lisa?
Okay, couple things. I had requested that we look at the bids this morning. So, and I did so, not necessarily to dissect it, but Jerry, that's a good point as far as, you know, the lighting. But I did so more just to look at the cost of this deal. I've got a son that's an engineer and talked over it with Mitch about it, and I tried to bring it up Thursday, but wasn't able to. But yeah, that cost of steel has gone up like crazy since this was engineered. And the costs in our projects, yeah, the engineering, when we're first doing it, you know, that amount can be determined. But then when we get the actual bids in, it's always different. So we can not ever say, gee, our engineers were, you know, wrong with that or assume that that's going to be the price when we're starting out a project. We've got the best engineers, I think, that work for our city. So when we're, and I've heard questions of, geez, we've been led, you know, down the wrong road with this project. So I don't think we can go down that road. Prices have gone up in steel, you know, we've also got the tariffs. So we've got excellent engineers working on this project. So I had asked for the bids just to look at that steel price. And then Jerry, I mean, that's a point, you know, we could look at as far as the lighting. But that's why I had asked for that this morning, not necessarily to dissect it. Now to Frank's point, that was excellent as far as, I don't think it's an option to go back out because I do think these contractors, well, it'll go up in price. In addition, those materials are going to go up in price, you know, however many months from now. So I don't think that's an option. And I just lost my train of thought. So as far as the agreement, we have never backed out of something like that. Bettendorf's always been just top-notch to deal with. I don't want to see us reneging on something like this. Developers jump at working with us. We've got a great reputation for that. So I think that would be the wrong thing to do. You know, we were asked some of these questions and, you know, some questions that came out, which I think were sad to be looking at that as far as backing out. We've committed to this, you know. Previously, we've put money into this project as far as, you know, the engineering. What is it, two million or something that was spent on that previously? We've already thrown money into this, and I think it would be a huge waste to back out of it and just switch gears. So I hate to see that. I know I had this in the discussion this morning on the phone, so, you know, bear with me. But obviously, I had surgery on my arm. And it was funny, I was in the room, and this was the weirdest conversation, but there was a nurse from Mercy One, and there was somebody from ORA. And they had no idea was I was in council, my daughter's in there. And they knew I was from Bettendorf. And so the nurse started shattering. He had just moved from Davenport out by TBK. And he's rattling about how wonderful Bettendorf is and how he loves it out there. Great infrastructure, okay, that we're investing in that. And the ORA person's talking about how they can't wait till the building's done and they're going to move out there. And there's all these amenities out by where they're working. I'm laying there half with it, thinking, you got to be kidding, you know? And my daughter's like, oh, just watch, her blood pressure's going to be zipping up. And sure enough, it did. And so for those to think that this isn't a big deal, and Bob's right, I think the ORA lady, she was all excited about the amenities that are going to be out there probably when she's on watch. She's going to be walking through the quick start and stuff. So to think people aren't excited about this amenity coming, boy, I was hearing it and I was half with it. So, and it was funny, this guy got talking because he had just moved from Davenport. And he was talking about how neat it was with Davin, or Bettendorf and our council and the projects we tackle and the just cutting-edge things that are going on and actually how we treat each other. You know, we might disagree with stuff, you know, and that type of thing, but we work together respectfully and cohesively and come together and stuff and move forward. So I just was going to share that, but it was just neat to hear that, so.
Why'd your blood pressure go up?
Yes.
Was there a particular part of the conversation where your blood pressure went up?
Yeah, when they, they were talking about how excited they were that this was coming.
Oh, okay. Where they're talking about the bridge?
Yeah, bridge.
Oh, okay. There we go. Nick, you have anything?
Yeah, so, thank you, Your Honor. I've been thinking about this, this project a lot because to Greg's point, Adamson is, it's, it's a big, it's a big chunk, right? I mean, and we're, we seem to, every time we turn around, it becomes a little bit more expensive, a little bit more expensive. Do I agree that this will be a focal point for the community? Absolutely. I mean, it's pictures, that's what they're designed to do. Get you excited about what the project looks like. I see it a little bit differently. We're not done developing out there. Developers not done developing out there. There's a lot of opportunity out there. And I, I almost see it as, it's not a, I don't think us going back to the developers and saying, hey, look, you know, costs are out of control, you know, everything, pricing is, is what it is now. What else do you want? What else do you want out here? Because does this bridge make sense for what their, their vision is, right? Yes, it connects the, it connects the two sides of the road. But ultimately, they're in business, right? There's other things that probably have their attention as well that maybe we can, maybe we can come back to them and say, hey, let's find an agreement that works for, for everyone. You know, the city doesn't necessarily see a path forward to this at the current setup. If we, you know, if we're looking at a, a regular bridge or a chain link like the one over here, okay, fine. I think the, the challenge that are, the piece that I'm struggling with right now is if we, if they, if the developers say, absolutely, we must have a bridge, no questions asked. What I'm challenged with right now is if we reject these bids and go back out and try to rebid and put together a plain bridge, right? Not a focal point, just a plain bridge. We're six, seven, eight million dollars all in on that one already, right? If you factor in what we spent here, right? And so that's the challenge that I'm faced with, right? Is this is the, that's where, this, I see that as probably the biggest issue right now is, okay, if we, we don't move forward with this, I think all the relationships, I, I'm, I'm less concerned about that. While they're, they're very important, I think we have great relationships with our developers. You, you all do a great job with that. So my, my concern is that we come back to this and say, you know, another year or two with another smaller bridge, timeline's pushed out, and now we're back at twelve million and we got a plain bridge, right? And that's, that's part of the, that's, that's part of the challenge that I'm struggling with right now is that there's just a lot of costs that we have sunk into this already. And if we pull the plug and the developers say, absolutely not, we have to have the bridge, we're left, we're left holding the bag, right? The city's left holding the bag. With a bridge that is less desirable, not as, you know, pretty, if you will, aesthetically pleasing, and we're still at, you know, three-quarters, eighty percent of the cost of this, this bridge here.
Greg?
Your Honor, thank you. Like Councilmember Adamson, I feel really stupid about this. I thought I had a handle on what this was going to cost. I asked about it when I got elected and did my orientation. And I can't say that I have been fully on top of things out there. We've spent a lot of money on the roundabouts. I've started calling that the roundabout capital of Iowa for the number of roundabouts that are out there. We've got this project, we've got another project four hundred yards away for another two million dollars. It just seems the scope of this thing, the magnitude of it, has simply gone right past me, and I don't like that. I don't like feeling stupid. In listening to the various concerns of the elected officials, I think I do lean towards having the city stand up and stand behind its word, which to me means we probably have to do something out there. And I say that knowing that developers are very transactional. They may like us, they may say we're good people, but they come here because it's easier to build here. It's because this is where the demand is, and this is where they can generate a profit. And during that timeframe between when I was not sitting as city attorney and came here on the council, I worked with a lot of developers. And profit was the motivating factor for an awful lot of them. So I have an interest in seeing that we uphold the, the city's word. I'm less concerned about the impact on the developers as we finagle our way through this. To me, I think Councilmember Sessur raises, Sessur raises an interesting aspect. Can we do the bridge as designed, but simply get rid of some of the wow factor amenities? Can we come up with something that allows us to proceed but preserves for another day the discussion of how we wow it up? Perhaps you leave, you put conduit in, but you don't run the fiber and you don't make the colors. In the two-million-dollar project that we were just talking about in the last month, we've been talking about putting in a rec trail under I-80 in anticipation of something happening down the road. It, it includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a welcome to Bettendorf sign when we're going to have a light at B just four hundred yards further up the road. I'm not a big fan of simply taking the money that we have from the fact that we had good bids in other projects and tossing it on here. I think the implication is, if we have highs and lows and it all balances out over time, we're not watching any of the projects. We're just tossing money and waiting to see where it falls and collecting it when it slides down to us. I don't like that impression. We're about ready to ask the, the population to authorize twenty-seven million dollars for a police station. And I want the population, I want our residents, I want the people of my ward, I want the people of the whole darn city to know that we are trying really hard to watch the budget. And just moving one from column A into column two doesn't strike me as we're trying really hard to watch the budget. So if I had a big project at home and it ran over budget, I'd cut something back. And I might delay some other project that would be nice, but isn't necessarily critical. So to me, if there is a way that we can look at reducing some of the wow factor amenities on the bridge and perhaps reduce the scope of the project on the two million dollars that's right next door to it, maybe we can come up with a way to resolve the budget issue and allow it to move forward and still meet my concerns of trying to stay on top of the budget and my concerns of trying to make sure the residents understand that we're trying to stay on top of the budget. Because to me, those are pretty important interests. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Norman, do you have anything you want to contribute?
Your Honor, thank you for the opportunity. I don't know that, as I'm trying to soak this in, I have any words of wisdom, which you probably come to not really expect.
I don't know. But I think the gentlemen on the end are being a little bit too hard on themselves with feeling stupid or not watching the, this thing. This thing has ebbed and flowed and had its own pieces and parts. And I think you're, it's not really fair that it's, it's the hot sauce analogy. You know, it's, the first one's hot, but you can tolerate it. The next one's a little bit hotter, but you're feeling it. And then suddenly, we got to the point where this is really super hot and you can't take it. And I think that's what I'm hearing from Greg. And obviously, this is a point of trust where, when it came out originally, I think we all kind of had sticker shock, but we, but we thought that, you know, to Fifth Ward's argument, that this is an amenity and we don't want it to seem like a vanity project, that it's too excessive and that obviously, we're in these seats. There's been no public comment negatively on all of the public hearings that have been had. And yet, that's because, in my opinion, there's a strong degree of trust that there's good people in these seats. And then when the soundbites are played and it's on the street like, what are these guys doing? Why don't they just take the fourteen and a half million dollars and fix my road? Or they said we needed better sewers or this or that. And that becomes an erosion of the trust that's been placed, you know, in, in this collective body. And that's, I think, what I'm most interested in is, how do we explain it? Because if the math has been done and then the needs are so great and the amenities, obviously with the TIF, this really is a fullback of the money that's been generated to help to build and enhance. But I'm not sure that plays on Main Street with that real focused attention. And we're, because we're in this rapid-fire soundbite world, I'm not sure that they can get the message that we so desperately want them to hear. Like Greg's advocating, we all have been advocating for debt reduction and proper, you know, fiduciary responsibilities. It's what we do every week when we're in here. You guys have done a great job as staff members because you treat it like it's your own money too. Because actually, part of it is, right? But that perception of excess and irresponsibility, and it's not that it's real, but that perception really bugs us here. So we've got to get that voice of the people, whether that's through the Communication Department, whether that's through social media. But I'll be darned if we can trust the regular mainstream media to get a decent story out there so people can understand all the hard work and they won't watch the videos. So it's, and the mayor's message as well. It's been just, right? I mean, I feel like that's, I don't have anything to add as much as, that's really where I'm at, is trying to figure out all of the hard work that's gone into this, what the right thing to do is. Because if the right thing is to stop it, we have time. And there's never the wrong time to do the right thing. I'm just not sure, at this point, we're at that critical pivot point of where to go with this thing. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Mr. Jager, you have something else?
Thank you. I really appreciate Scott's comments. I always look to Scott for good balance in the overall viewpoint. I wasn't here, obviously, for any of the public hearings on any of the development agreements or any, any of that. And there hasn't, I believe you when you say there wasn't any public comment. I can tell you that when I ran, there were people who asked me about it. And mostly, what I said was, well, the deal's done. They also asked me about the apartment complex at the end of Devil's Glen. I said the same thing, that deal's done. But I think it is important for But I think it is important for us to understand. That. The money that staff is proposing be allocated to this is not TIF money. It's general obligation taxpayer dollars. We are not able to fund. The eleven point seven that we've already committed out of TIF money. So if we put another million in, that money comes out of the pockets of the general taxpayer. And that can be the right thing. It may be the right thing. Uh, maybe you're too, we're too far in it to stop and we're gonna just keep going. But I don't wanna mislead the public by having them think that it's being paid for by somebody somewhere else. When at least in some part, it's being paid for by all of us.
Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. I, I agree that the cost is too high. It, it's just, you know, it's over the budget. When we first started talking about this bridge, the very first number we threw a dart at the wall and it was three million. And then we started putting a little thought behind it and it went up to what, six or seven? And then pretty soon it was nine and, uh, I think. The, and the numbers just kept going up. And I guess that's why I'm proposing that we cut the lighting out of it. We'll still have a project. We will still meet the requirements in the development agreement. But I think we gotta balance it with what Greg is saying, which is these are taxpayer dollars. You know, and while nobody has come to the council here talking about the numbers here on, on this particular project. At the same time, you can listen to Gary Moore. Gary Moore, who represents Bettendorf taxpayers in the, in, in the state legislature. He says the number one complaint he gets since he's been on legislature for what, ten, uh, eight or nine, 10 years now? Is the property taxes are too high. And we saw the legis- legislature spend a lot of time talking about it last year. And the governor has promised to bring it up as one of her topics at the next legislative session. So while the money may appear to be there. We still gotta, we gotta be, uh, judicious with how we spend the money. So if, I would propose we cut the lighting out of it. We would still have a bridge. At some point in time in the future, if. Grants become available or we feel richer in this, in the city, we get more development out there. We can always go ahead and add the light ba- back on, correct?
The lighting could be added back on?
Yes, but I do wanna make one point on the lighting is there are certain amounts of lighting that we cannot remove. So all the lighting.
There'd be some lighting, I would.
The, the only thing that I would say you could remove would be the lighting on the arch. Everything else is required for safety requirements. Since we have a bridge that is above a roadway. You've got lighting in the railing systems and then the light poles that have to be done. Otherwise you've got a huge safety issue with a dark bridge up there. So the only lighting that could would be the arch.
If, if you bid lighting as a full package and you're saying you can't get rid of all of it, how much savings would?
I, I think the arch was about a half million.
So it's about fi- five hundred of the million you're looking for?
Yeah. Now, something else I, I did wanna add to Councilmember Jager's, uh, concerns about the, the $2 million for the I-80 project. There is definitely some cost savings that I know we can look at. Now, one thing I wanted to stress when we talked about that, you know, a month ago was. You know, those are all estimates. Now there, obviously is the possibility that those numbers come in higher. I would say if you look at our bids for the last two years. And even this bid aside from those two items, everything has been really strong pricing. Um, so I feel very confident in something as simple as concrete. So the rec trail, I, I think they're gonna get a great number on that. That current number includes rec trail all the way to the north end of the DOT's project. So as far as they're going on middle road, it was taking that rec trail up and just let them build it continuously. We could cut probably fifteen hundred foot of that rec trail if we wanted to. I, I would strongly advise we get through the interchange. Just for the fact that the traffic volumes would make that difficult to build under the bridge, but you could stop right at the north edge of the, the ramps. And you could save some there.
Certainly if there's a development agreement to be done with a developer on the north side.
You could pay for it then, absolutely.
You can make that.
Yep, there's some savings there.
Of that project.
You know, the, the sign, there's always, I mean, some, a lot of this is still estimates as well. So there's some pretty strong contingencies built in there. I, I really feel like that number. Could help offset, say, the, um, the, at least some of those costs for the lighting and try to be able to leave that lighting in the arch and I. I'm saying that because I, I really feel like that this whole group, I think our community, from the images they've seen. The amenity they expect, if you put that out there and don't light it, I, I think it's gonna be really underwhelming.
Can you clarify that for just a second for me? Cause again, I, I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. Are you saying you think you can find a million dollars with the savings on the $2 million, $1 project?
No, I, I think towards that, i- if, I'm still assuming that, that six fifty in savings that we had from this year could be put there. But I'm saying of the, the half million dollar that the lighting premium is, if you wanna call it. I, I think we can find some savings. I, I can't give you a number on what that'll be, but. At a minimum, you know, I bet you could save a hundred and fifty thousand just by shortening that rec trail.
And the signage was projected at a hundred and fifty?
It was, and, and that was a high number. I, I don't think that was anywhere near that. And if that's something we've gotta look at, we, we absolutely can. We would have to come back in front of you for approval of any of that anyways.
Jeff, did you have something you wanted to add?
Your honor, thank you very much. And this is more so for the folks that are following us on the live stream. Councilmember Jager makes a good point about this being an issuance of GO and we are paying it back with a component of TIF. Uh, one thing I think it's important that everyone know as well is we tried to estimate the amount of tax increment based on the value we believe would be there. Uh, there's projects that are gonna happen north of the IRNT facility, commercial projects that we did not contemplate as part of that. And where ORA falls in this equation is another variable as well. So when we suggest that this is gonna partially be paid through TIF and partially by taxpayers, we're not certain yet what that ultimate number will be. And I think that's just important for the folks at home to know. It could be higher, it could be slightly lower. But I think Jason and I, as we looked at this, we're very, very conservative with our estimates. Uh, so hopefully the burden as we see it as this fully develops will be less than we anticipate. But I just wanted to make that point so the folks at home know that there is TIF increment that is gonna fund hopefully the majority of this. I think that's important.
All right, that was, I was gonna ask Jason if he could elaborate to Greg's point about GO versus TIF. What percentage of the debt repayment is TIF in, in your calculations that we did? And what portion of that is GO? And to Greg's point, the bonds are general obligation bonds, but we, we pledge TIF revenues to those. So they're not TIF revenue bonds.
Right.
So if you just could elaborate a bit.
Uh, sure, thank you. Um. So as part of the development agreement, the city negotiated to co- to basically collect twenty five percent of the TIF increment for our own purposes. And allocate that twenty five percent to the debt, um, service on these bonds. The TIF increment alone, that twenty five percent will fund, uh, by our estimations, probably. Fifty to sixty percent of the debt service payment. But it's important to note that, that the, the remainder of the payment, the GO portion that's funded from the debt service fund. Will be covered by the, by the project, if that makes sense, by the development. Because, um, we do collect our $4 and eighty five cent debt levy on all of that development as well. So between the twenty five cents or twenty five percent TIF increment. And our general debt service levy on just the development properties. The debt service on these bonds should be covered by the project, if that, if I'm making sense.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. Greg? Hey, go ahead.
First of all, Scott, thank you for your kind words. I really appreciate that. And I'm, like Greg said, I'm not surprised that, cause you're, you're pretty cool. Uh, number two. I am s- I am so personally proud. I don't want anybody thinking that I'm. Feeling bad about staff or I'm so proud of the city. I'm so proud of the staff. Been with the city since seventy two on its different. Aspects. But everybody, they just do a great job. I'm so proud of everybody. And the, the, the development of this city over the years is just to me amazing. But I do, I do wanna say this. I think. People coming up. In the, in the future years, staff and whatever, learn, learn from situations. And I think we're all so anxious to try to do good and make the city nicer and stuff that sometimes. We maybe get ahead of ourselves a little bit. And I hear talk about, um, coming up, and we'll talk about this a while, I know, as planning. I think it's time to kinda tap the brakes a little bit. And look out maybe a little bit farther. And, uh, when we start talking about. Projects that were, that are coming up. Just really make sure that, that we're not biting off more that we can chew. I hope that makes, does that make any sense at all? Anyway, that's, that's it. But I, I, I'm certainly not criticizing anybody. This is, you know, how, how do you know what the steel is gonna be triple? You just, you can't predict stuff like that. But the, but the bottom line is it's still gonna cost more than we thought originally. Thank you, your honor.
Greg Jay?
Can somebody help me with the numbers? If we were to take the Kimberly Road project. And defer it, not just one year, because it. I hesitate to. I hesitate to tie the hands of the council as it relates to the debt service discussion by committing funds in future years to projects that we are doing now. Uh, if we were to cut the bud, the CIP allocation of funds in half, we would already have used up some by taking those monies and committing it here. So I'm not big on that as a solution. But if we take that four hundred thousand. And you, uh, cut the rec trail. Fifteen hundred feet. And we don't do the welcome to Bettendorf sign on the south side of the interchange, knowing that. We probably would want one on the north side of the interchange at some point or at Fifty Third and Eighteenth and all the other. We just get rid of it. How much of the million or a million two does those two things, those three things get us to?
If you included the sign, I bet you could get to seven hundred thousand, six fifty, seven hundred thousand, somewhere around there.
Seven hundred thousand and then it leaves you the lighting, but it still puts us three hundred thousand short.
Correct. To where you're then only using half of the savings that we've realized so far this year. Now, the only thing to keep in mind with the $2 million ID reimbursement is that's also future money as well.
Yeah.
So we won't, we won't pay that back until, now, we'll know those numbers in a month. From the DOT, but we won't pay it.
It's GO issue. You're exactly right.
But we don't pay it for two years.
Against my position or my, it argues against my interest in having us do something about the debt amount and the debt levy. You're right.
But, but we will know that one. So we'll at least know hard numbers on everything from the DOT in August. The only thing is it, it won't quite overlap with our deadline to take action on this project. Now, not to say that i- if those numbers did come in better. Knowing that we have two or three years to pay it, we could still award our full project and, and work to, to value engineer, you say, the lighting out if we decided at that point. You know, it's not something you have to do on the front end, especially since the lighting will be the last thing that gets done on the project. But we'll, we'd still need to know in a fairly timely manner, but we'll, we'll have a few week overlap there from the DOT.
May I ask Nick, then Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. Brendan, in that same line of thought, what other opportunities do we have to value engineer this bridge?
That's, that's the issue. And, and actually a point I had in my notes I didn't make. Projects like this have very little area to, to value engineer. The, the lighting is about it. We really tried, we, despite the fact it still came in over, we really tried to keep this thing, um, as, as stripped down as you could. So you have concrete deck, you got railing, you got light poles. That's, and your structural concrete and structural steel. That's really it. Can't shorten the bridge, can't, you know, change the height or anything like that.
Do we do any of that? I, I think at one point there was talk about speakers and stuff like that. Is that all been taken out?
Uh, we threw the conduit in, cause it turned out to be the same conduit for, um, the lighting. The, and that's the base lighting. So it's all run through the, um, the channels in the, um, in the railing. But there was no money for the speakers. It was for the conduit to be run. So we're still gonna run the conduit.
Councilmember Palczynski as well, just as frame of reference for that, I, I think the speakers are off the table for now. But if you recall in the early, early dialogue, whenever Mayor Gallagher made the video with Visit Quad Cities, we were looking at. Facility that had like stone fascia on it that was kinda matching the whole feel of Forest Grove Drive and everything. So. I would suggest the amount of value engineering we could do, we've done as much as we could to still maintain. A structure that is somewhat quasi aesthetically pleasing. But still as efficient as we believe it can be.
Thank you.
Yeah, to, to Jeff's point, um, you know, the, the various iterations that we've shown you over the years. At this point, the only real aesthetic value on, say, the arch pierce, for example, is that they're gonna be stained blue. And that's a drop in the bucket in terms of cost. There's no stone on that. You know, it's got a bit of a custom shape to it. That's just a form liner. Uh, we did look at limestone form liners. We looked at, um, stamp colored, all that stuff. You know, we've stripped all that out at this point.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Actually, I had the same question Nick did.
Okay.
Which was, was there anything else to value engineer? So great minds think alike. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Okay, Greg Jay?
Thank you, your honor. I know we've been hitting this for about an hour now. If I can summarize that I understand where we are on this. Jerry has suggested an option which would. Fix the problem. But it may leave a bridge that is less aesthetically pleasing. The second viable option would be to try and negotiate. An amendment to the development agreement with the developer for some sort of a cost share. Between now and August one, if we have to decide this at the first meeting in August. Staff would have three weeks to sit down with the developer and try to figure something out. I don't wanna prejudge such a, such a, a thing. But if I'm on the other side, which is how I look at stuff, what are they, what's the other side gonna say? The other side's gonna say what's in it for me. And I don't know that I have a good answer to that, but that would be a second viable option. A third viable option would be to try and Jerry rig. There's not a cattywampus, but a Jerry rig.
It's up to you, Jerry.
Some sort of combination approach to find the million. Which, from my perspective, could involve. Taking off the middle road project, the Kimberly Road project. Could involve s- cutting the scope of the $2 million project. And could involve using a little bit of the cost savings to get us over the hurdle and done with this. To me, that would reflect an opportunity to show to the public. We're addressing some of the concerns by making changes in our direction. But we're still preserving our options to go after other issues down the road. Cause I think, I think it'll be a Lyle topic to talk about debt if we don't get to it before then. But I'm certainly willing, if the council is willing to say, let's give up the decorative lighting. I'm certainly willing to go down that path because that is an easy solution in terms of how we resolve this. So for your honor, from my perspective, I think I hear three viable options. I don't think just breaching and walking away. Is something the council wants to do. I think everybody is concerned that Bettendorf. It's taken forty years to get away entirely from a very bad financial position. We've, we've set ourselves up. As the envy of the area. I don't think we wanna do things that work against that perception. But if there are other options out there that I missed, I'm, I'm anxious to hear those.
Becker, did you have anything?
I'd wait if there are any councilmembers left, your honor.
I think we're all had our opportunity to talk.
I think we're all had our opportunity to talk.
Well, I, I think, I think we would, in the next couple of weeks, like to have the opportunity to sit down with the developers to tell them what the council is think, our thinking, did think about as we had this conversation. The good thing is, we have a couple of weeks, which we don't normally have, to have that conversation, so we can certainly do that. And I wanted to make a, a comment for, because I, I've heard this already from a couple of peoples in the, people in the community, why don't you just take this money and build the police station with this money? And we can't legally do that. That, that is not permitted, and we don't have the authority to take these TIF dollars and/or the, the GO and, and build that station. We have, the amount of money doesn't fit within our ability for a general corporate purpose, what we're allowed by law, so we have to go out to referendum. That just, they're two different animals, and that's, that's what we have to, to deal with. And I would say this, when we were building I-74, the DOT came to us and said, there's no way we can build the bridge, do the trail, and continue the project past Lincoln Road. We don't have enough money to do that. But we can make operational independence at Lincoln Road and come back and do the Middle Road interchange and the Spruce Hills interchange later. And we didn't like that. We had started at 53rd and Davenport because Davenport needed that interchange to get built for the future of that interchange, and that was a way for the state to solve the Davenport problem tied to the bridge, and we knew we needed the bridge, and we thought we could live with those two interchanges for a while. And then the DOT came to us later and said, if the opportunity presents itself to do I-80 quicker than the interchange at Middle and Spruce, we think we can get 80 done before those two interchanges, and we think that might be better, and we thought that was better. We had to give up something to do that. I think we understand that, from a priority standpoint, that something may have to give in the future, or now, to get to the future, and I think that's a good opportunity to go back for us to look at, what can we give now, knowing that you're going to have a discussion on debt service or the debt issue in the fall, but we have to figure a way to prioritize this. So we, I think, given that we have potentially at least two weeks to talk about this, and potentially three, that gives us time to talk to the developer about their interests, to Greg's point, and what other things we could find in other projects that might help us get here, that could at least be put in front of you for potential options. So I think we know what our work is in the next couple of weeks, and we will get to work at that. I don't know if, I don't know if Jeff, looked at me like Jeff had his hand up, Your Honor. Jeff, you got something else for us?
Yeah, Your Honor, this is just a little bit of fluff on top of this as we're buttoned up, but this is a bit of a new or unique platform that we're using tonight, and I just wanted to say, one, I, I appreciate the tenor of council and the civility of the conversation, but also kudos to Brent for providing such an informed presentation, so you can, one, understand the technical issues we're dealing with, but also, I think, for everyone online and everyone that may be listening, understand this a little bit in layman's terms as well. So I just wanted to give Bren a kudos for providing this in a way which everyone can comprehend the issue at hand.
Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make clear what I've said. Decker said staff understands, and what I said may be a little different. I would very much like to see us preserve the savings that are out there, so that they impact that decision. If we can make cuts as opposed to simple deferrals, I'm in favor of cuts in that area. And then for the Kimberly Road thing, since it's not in the Davenport five-year CIP, my thought is, that particular project might get shoved all the way out of our five-year CIP, and to me, that's no longer a deferral, that's a removal of the project from our immediate consideration. So my, I wanted to, just to make clear, I'm looking at, can we cut, not defer, to get to this money?
And...
And I, yeah, people may have different opinions.
Yeah, I would just, I was just saying, I, I think we all know that very few people call you and say, I don't want you to ever fix my street, I don't want you to ever fix my sewer, I don't ever want you to fix my alley, I don't ever want to see any more improvements.
And I sure don't want to see my taxes go up.
And at the same time, we all know that we have streets in your own wards, that you would say, but by God, this one's got to stay in the plan. So we'll do the best we can to look at what the opportunities are.
All right, well, I'd like to thank Brent, thank you very much, and staff, thanks for the cordial discussion from everybody. I would say, yes, Scott, go right ahead.
Your Honor, we may benefit from your thoughts and your perspective on this. I, I think, you know, as we're going through this over the next few weeks, it would be good to hear what His Honor thinks about where we're at.
I was getting to that.
Okay, sorry, Your Honor. I know you're wrapping it up.
I, I am kind of wrapping it up, but I wanted to thank everybody for your comments this evening, and I think it's really clear that we've all thought long and hard about this. I've heard many of the themes I thought I'd hear, but public safety and getting people safely throughout that area across what's going to be a four-lane road didn't come up as much as I thought it might, and if we needed a bridge when we contemplated it, do we still need a bridge? And if so, I worry, just like Nick and everybody else, if we're going to wait on a bridge till 2028, and the, the cost savings to change it to a different bridge that'll cost us six, and we've already got two and a half million into this one, 6% increase in the price, we all hate, and we don't want to spend that money. It kind of comes down to, do we need the bridge? If we need the bridge for public safety, then it's very important. I think, thank you to those who brought up our reputation and how we got there, and how important that is. Our word should be our bond, I believe in that very strongly. That being said, we have developers we can talk with, and maybe there's something there to Greg's point, because they seem to be reasonable people we've dealt, we've dealt with before, and hopefully, they're looking at phase three. So, good stuff happening out there. I just really want to thank you all for your input and the time you've put into this. It's going to be a nice discussion, but it's going to be something that I'm sure, when the decision is made, we'll all get behind. All right, thank you very much, Brent. We'll move on from our presentation. We have a couple items to appear tomorrow at 6:00 and 7:00, and these are with regard to our transit system, and so we welcome our Transit Operations Manager, Austin, William Austin, thanks for being here, buddy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Try to make this short and sweet for you guys. So before, council tomorrow night is a public hearing followed by a resolution to approve changes to the Bettendorf Transit Americans with Disabilities Act, complimentary paratransit service policy. I'm just here tonight to provide counsel a summary of the activities that have been completed over the last six weeks since we set the date for this public hearing. So show you a quick timeline, so May 20th is when we set the public hearing. May 21st, an email went out to our community stakeholders. This includes KSI, Empowering Abilities, the Iowa-Illinois Center for Independent Living, Milestones, and the National Aging and Disability Transportation Center, along with the Bi-State Regional Commission, MetroLink, Davenport City Bus, and Riverbend Transit. That email included a copy of a letter just explaining the changes that are being proposed, letting them know when the public hearing will happen, as well as letting them know of a couple of dates that we had held some public informational meetings for. The day after, thanks to our wonderful communications team, a letter was mailed out to all of our existing paratransit pass holders. That was about 406 individuals that received that letter. Very similar language to the letter that went to the community stakeholders, again, just providing a, a high-level overview of the proposed changes, and letting them know the dates that they can come and ask questions, provide comment, and where to attend the public hearing. So then, June 16th and June 30th were the two dates that we held the public informational meetings at the library. June 16th, we had nine attendees who attended that, nine individuals who were paratransit pass holders, and then this afternoon, we held the second one. We had one, one repeat attendee show up to that one with some additional questions for us. Here's just a brief overview of what we received from, at those public meetings. A lot of it was very question-based, a lot of the pass members just wanted clarification on some of the items. You know, obviously, that, that paratransit policy and procedure manual is, is fairly long, so, you know, just clarifications on the specifics of the no-show policy, outstanding fare tickets that they had already purchased at the $1.75 level if those were still going to be honored, you know, questions on how to fill out the new application, what they need to do next, and that a lot of questions actually direct, geared towards Riverbend service-related stuff. So anytime you have a public meeting, sometimes you'll get additional items beyond what, what was at discuss, but all very good discussion. We did have one parent that was there with her daughter. She provided really what I would say the only comment that we received back, that she thinks, and that's why I got quoted for there, she, she thought it was a, a great update, that the fare increase is long overdue and that they, they understood, you know, what was going on. She obviously expressed some concerns with just the changes happening and longstanding eligibility, you know, that her daughter has had, but I think just through the discussion, she was well at ease by the time she left, and was really, really on board and supportive. We did not receive any comments back from the community stakeholders that I mentioned previously. I do have confirmation that Bi-State, Davenport City Bus, Riverbend, and MetroLink all received it, as well as confirmation email from Empowering Abilities and Milestones. So I do know that they received it, they just didn't have any comments, my assumption being that, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel with this, so I think they're all on board. Obviously, any of those stakeholders could show up at the public hearing tomorrow night and provide comment, but to this, to this point, we have not received anything from them. So that portion basically satisfies our department's public involvement process thus far, just with the last step being the public hearing and the vote tomorrow night. And then just a quick chart to kind of wrap this all up, it's not information that I provided all of you initially, but I went through and completed a statewide comparison of the 11 transit agencies that operate in an area that are larger than 50,000 people. As a side note, Bettendorf's in the 200,000-plus just because we operate in a, in an urbanized area, that includes portions of Scott County and Rock Island County, so we get lumped into that large urban transit environment. Of the 11 systems, as you can see here, we're the only system in the state of Iowa that doesn't currently require the medical certification, which is one of the big changes that we're implementing. And then with the exception of Cambus and Iowa City, that's the University of Iowa's transit system, they offer all their services for free, we also have the lowest fare. So, again, just to kind of drive the point home, we're not really reinventing the wheel here, you know, we're just simply catching up with what the standard is across the state. So, based on all of that, information provided, you know, we haven't received any negative feedback on this, so we would just recommend continuing forward with the public hearing and resolution vote tomorrow night.
Any questions? Roston? All right. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. That'll remain on tomorrow night's agenda as item six and seven. Let's please take a look at the consent agenda for tomorrow evening. Any item on consent, any council member would like to discuss or ask questions about it this time? All right. May entertain a motion that all items on consent remain as such for tomorrow night's consideration.
Oh, moved. Tag it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jason, before we go, would you just give us a quick update on the text that we got from you about the utility bill changes? We know they're coming, but I'll just hand it off to you for a sec.
Thank you, Your Honor. Happy to provide an update on this project that is swiftly kind of coming to a, a close, actually, but over the weekend, we kicked off our communications campaign for the transition from the old utility billing software to a new NetSuite utility billing system. Some items that I want to note for council and the public, residential customers will not directly be impacted until quarterly bills are sent in mid-July. Those bills are then due in mid-August. Paper bills for residential service will continue to be sent quarterly, and all current payment options will continue to be available in the new system. Customers will have the option to view and pay their bills online through the new online payment portal, which will require a registration process that we'll be communicating about over the next couple of weeks. If you want to continue your auto-pay by credit card, you will have to re-register in the new portal. Customers who currently pay by check, bank, bill payment, or auto-pay by checking account will really see no difference, really shouldn't feel any difference, other than a change in their account number on the bill that they receive. But if they want to register their account online, they will need to register in the new payment portal. Importantly, in May, we completed what I would call a soft go-live with our 1,000, roughly 1,000 monthly commercial customers. Those customers have now been billed twice, once in May and once in June, and billing and collections are going very smoothly. So it was a nice test case of about 1,000 accounts that we could kind of roll out early to kind of work out some kinks. We learned a lot through that process and have, have been able to kind of iron out some hurdles before we go live with the remaining residential accounts. You did notice in the messaging this weekend, we have temporarily suspended taking payments from residential customers in order to move existing account balances from the old system to the new system. That's, that actually started happening today. We timed it very carefully to happen this week because there are no current bills outstanding. Any outstanding balance that exists today is actually past due, so we would not normally expect many payments to take place this week. So, shouldn't be too disruptive to our residents. We accept, expect to begin accepting those payments in the new system by the end of next week. Again, in mid-July, we will go live with the remaining 14,649 residential accounts. Those bills will be hitting mailboxes after July 10th. This is just the beginning of our communications campaign. Angie and the communications team have been a huge help in creating and scheduling several messages that will go out periodically over the next few weeks. We've updated the website, you've seen possibly some Iowa, alert Iowa text messages, we're hitting all the socials, and I don't want to be a spoiler, but we may bring this up on the mayor's message this Friday.
All right, here we go.
So, before I, before I let us go, I know we've been here a long time tonight, special thanks to Amy Henze in Finance and John Grimm in IT, they have done the heavy lift on this project, and it has been a lift, but I think it's gone great so far. And then, special thanks also to the communications team for helping us get the word out sometimes on very short notice. So thank you, Angie and the team.
Thanks, Jason. Any other questions for Jason? Just a quick update on that anymore? All right. All right, I don't have anything to add to tomorrow night's agenda. Any council member have anything to add to the agenda? Frank? I'd just like to thank Decker and Jeff for the cleanup that took place last week out at the roundabouts, out at TPK. It was Jeff and Brian. I've never seen thistle as big as those thistles they were pulling out, and I mean, they were pulling them out by the trailer load out there, so it really looks nice out there now, and I appreciate them and their attention.
Yeah, thank you real quick, I just wanted to note, the contractor did an amazing job, they ended up pulling out 15 dump truckloads of weeds and thistle out of the roundabouts. So, we'll stay on top of it, and we have a plan in place to make sure it looks nice the rest of the year, in three years, while we run.
Sorry I omitted you, Brian.
Oh, you're fine. I'm just going to stay in the shadows and do my job.
Anything else to be added for tomorrow? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Oh, moved.
We stand adjourned, good work, people, we'll see you tomorrow night, 7 o'clock sharp, please.